We don't need.
We'll call this meeting over. You guys along, Jane?
Yep.
Roll call.
Earl Mullins.
Here.
Dallas Abrams.
Here.
Joe Bartle.
Here.
Rick Penwinkle.
Here.
Mary Jane Thomas.
Here.
Jean Davies.
Here.
I just started with the little boxes. Rick Penwinkle. Frank, would you please stand right here? Aye, repeat your name.
Aye, Rick Penwinkle, Sheriff, in for Henry.
Do you hereby solemnly swear?
Do you hereby solemnly swear?
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States?
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I shall faithfully?
And I shall faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
Inpartially.
Discharge the duties of council member?
Discharge the duty of council members?
For the village of New Paris, Ohio?
For the village of New Paris, Ohio.
For the term ending December 31st, 2015?
For the term ending December 31st, 2015.
To which I have been elected?
To which I've been elected.
I need your signature, please. Thank you, sir. Nick, Ralph, would you please rise and raise your right hand, please? Aye, repeat your name.
Aye, Nick.
Aye, Ralph.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States?
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I shall faithfully?
I shall faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of public affairs?
Discharge the duties of public affairs.
Board member from the village of New Paris, Ohio?
Board member from the village of New Paris, Ohio.
For the term ending December 31st, 2015?
For the term ending December 31st, 2015.
To which I have been appointed?
To which I have been appointed.
Would you please sign these, please?
Excuse me, just a second, I need to get my paper.
Okay. You can just put her next one.
I did.
Aye, your name?
Steven Moore.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States?
That I shall support the Constitution of the United States. And to, yeah, I can't see my glasses, I just got out.
Okay, okay.
So, okay. Sorry.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio?
The State of Ohio.
And that I shall faithfully?
I shall faithfully.
Honestly?
Honestly.
And impartially?
Inpartially.
Discharge the duties of public affairs? Board member?
Board member.
From the village of New Paris, Ohio?
Village of New Paris, Ohio.
For the term ending December 31st, 2013?
December 31st. December 31st.
2013.
2013.
To which I have been appointed? Name, sir. Sign this.
Whoops.
Sign this.
I haven't drank anything, I'm just...
Yeah, I'll tell also.
How'd he go?
That's what I'm just thinking.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
That's what we're taking care of. Now's everyone had a check, chance to look over the minutes from November meeting. Is there any questions or additions to the minutes?
Make a motion, Ray, shift the minutes from November meeting.
Second.
Roll call.
Jean Davies? Yes. Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve warrants and parental time sheets.
Subway?
Subway.
Roll call.
Rick Penwinkle?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
I need a motion to approve transfer of police revenue from general fund to police fund.
Subway? Second.
Roll call.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Rick Penwinkle?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the police fund monthly transfer, seventy-one hundred dollars.
Subway?
Second.
Was that Jim?
Right.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Penwinkle?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Need a motion to approve November interest transfers.
Subway? Second.
All right, Susan Skipps of Key Engineering isn't here, but Dave is.
And roll call?
Yes, I need a roll call person.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Penwinkle?
Yes.
Jean Davies?
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Now, Dave?
Well, I just wanted to come personally say that I wanted to know if there was anything we could do to help with your grant. It's very, it's very difficult to get grant funds, and it's even more difficult to get them back. So, if there's anything that we can do from an engineering perspective to change the scope of the work, to change how we do things as far as the engineering goes, to lessen the cost of the engineering, I wanted to, to, to offer that as an option for you that you, you know, you consider in your deliberations as whether you're going to send your project back or not. You're going to be applying to ours, and you're going to see if, uh, CC. To voice that to you, Stephen, and, uh, maybe I'll...
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate everything that you've done.
Key Engineering's been a big, uh, big help to this town. Uh, we couldn't have got the grants that we got had it not been for Susan. She's a, she's on top of her game, and, uh, absolutely, we certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Dave. Committee reports, Chief Driver?
Police department handled one hundred and one calls for service in the number of fourteen reports of two arrests, fifteen citations, and eighteen warnings, and I was in one vehicle. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Earl? Dallas, anything? Building?
Uh, no.
Streets?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Lights?
Dark.
Nothing there, okay.
If we still got that little shady thing up there, we're still going to probably just fix it. Fix it.
Finance committee, Rick?
We only have a discussion about the renewal of the Miami Valley Light, uh, Miami Valley Light at this time?
Might as well get it over with.
Okay, we've, uh, Joe and I and Jane and the mayor had their financial meeting the other day, and unfortunately, with the budget being what it is, we're already short. We're not going to make payroll for the police department this, this month. We'll be out of money for the months of, so the general funds might have to put some money in to carry it, finish the month out. We'll also have to take some money out of general fund to fund for the first two to three year, uh, first two, three months into next year until we receive our profit tax and our allotment sometime. We never know exactly when we're going to get it, sometime this March, sometime this April. So, looking at this budget with the local, uh, cuts that we've been cut from small government, it's not looking very good for us. Our, our estimated projection for local government funds this year is forty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars. It's eighty-nine cents. Last year was sixty-eight thousand, and in two thousand eight, we was getting seventy-eight thousand from small government funds. So, we're taking a pretty big hit right there. We're taking a twenty thousand on estimated here, and they're telling us there's another cut coming next year. They hit us twenty-five percent, they're going to hit us another twenty-five percent this coming year. So, we don't know that we're even going to keep this forty-eight thousand dollars right now, because we just don't know what they're going to do. They're telling us to expect another cut. Under the circumstances, I have, would be my recommendation to council, there is no way that we have an extra seventeen thousand dollars to renew contract with Miami Valley Lighting.
Are you making a motion to shut them off?
I don't wait to hear if anybody has anything else to say.
What does it cost to shut them off?
They're telling us that shutting them off is going to be five thousand dollars.
What's it cost to turn them back on?
They're saying that could be another five thousand dollars.
Okay, there's two thousand dollars here.
But five thousand of that, you don't know that you have to spend because you don't know whether they're going to have the money to turn them back on if you turn them off. Now, I've been in contact with Mr. Steichen, he called me the other day, want to know what he's going to do. And I said, I have no idea until after the meeting, we have a financial meeting. You know, it's not looking good for us, it's the last thing we want to do. But I said, we just got to look at the numbers and see what cable we're doing. I expressed to him, and I thought the five thousand dollars was kind of high. I have not been in contact with our attorney. When our contract's up, our contract's up. Now, if they choose to leave them on without pay, that'd be up to them, but I would assume they would not do that. And I also assume, I don't know why, that we necessarily would have to pay them to pick them, to turn them out, because we're at the end of our contract, we exhausted our terms. That's something for legal, for legal device, which we are in the process of acquiring two new attorneys, and we haven't had a chance for the paperwork to come to the council to approve these two attorneys. So, we haven't had an opportunity to talk with them to see where we stand. Only thing I can tell you is that at the end of this month, our contract with Miami Valley Lighting is up, and the streetlights cost us seventeen thousand dollars a year. And we simply don't have it. Plain as that.
Of course, I'm certain, go ahead and turn them on.
What is the taxpayer getting for their taxes? I thought the lights was included in that.
Lights are just that.
I mean, it looks to me like you're taking something away from people and not giving them anything in return.
We're not taking away anything from anybody, we just, we have an obligation.
Is there any cuts you can make? In personnel, police, anything else? Not, not that it would be that much, but we need to cut down just besides the lights because people are not going to stand for it.
Well, they're going to do, they're going to pay the bill, you don't have the money. They voted, they voted the levy down, so what's, what's our...
That's true, you, you got a point there.
I know.
But I don't know...
We're not reacting to any vote or anything that's took place. We're, we're reacting to the fact, the numbers in front of us. And with the small government cuts that we've been taking, that we're taking, and more to come, we are not going to have the money to pay the bill. It's that simple.
The local government funding that we've had since nineteen sixty-two will be gone next year. Gone. No more.
Well, it looks like we could do some other cutting too, besides streetlights.
Well, you know, there, we're looking, you know, there's nothing that's saved here, but there, you got to start somewhere.
You got to start somewhere.
I mean, the last, in our, in my opinion, the last resort is to cut any police protection. And it's a number that's bad enough to have to turn the lights out. Now, you don't want anybody out there patrolling either.
Well, I disagree with you on that, but then that's a question.
But, you know, it's simply the numbers.
There's a side of your opinion.
It's simply the numbers, people, that's all it is. It's nothing other than it's the numbers, we don't have the money. It's that simple. We got the, we got the project, the Washington Street project that we have been proved of. It's a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar grant, which Key Engineering and us worked to get, very lucky to get, along with the other, the Washington Street project, the Spring Street project. Joe, we got about three million dollars of the grants in the last five years, very, very fortunate.
What are those grants going to cost us besides the grant money?
Jeanie, this is already done.
The grant money?
It's already done, except for the Washington Street project.
Okay, what's the Washington Street?
Well, if you'll let me, I'll finish it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You finish it.
But what I'm telling you is, you know, the misconception here in town is, oh, look what they're doing, they got plenty of money. That's not the case. The case is, we've been very, very fortunate to receive these grants. We fight for everybody in this state for this money. We've been very, very lucky to get what we've got. Basically, because of Susan Skipps of Key Engineering, the girl is on top of her game. She gets it done. This town owes her a debt of gratitude for what has been done. Now, out of that almost three million dollars, we've only had to match a very, very small portion of that, which we've been able to do. And we had the money laid back for the Washington Street project, which is from, from Dairy Queen to the Federico, and from, uh, the corner of, of Walnut to the Legion. And there's some water in there up there on the, the Federico Inn that was supposed to go in this project. Two years ago, and you got to stay in the pipeline for these grants. You're in a pipeline for about five years. It takes a long time to get through the pipeline. And if you survive and get something, you're good, you're extremely lucky. And for us to get the projects we got, it's, nobody, nobody in this county has got what we've got in the last seven years. Very lucky to get it. So, having said that, the Washington Street project that's about to be done, and the decision's not being made here tonight about this, but that's a possible thing that we may have to give back. It's a terrible thing, and I've talked to commissioners about it. I said, you know, we don't know what's going to happen here. The last thing we want to do is give a grant money back, because once it's gone, it's gone, you'll never see it again. But, uh, what's more important? Protection for the village or sidewalks for the village?
I want to remind, just a minute.
At my mind, it's protection.
I want to remind everybody too, that it is in our policies that each homeowner is responsible for his sidewalk and curb in front of his property. Now, we could have went ahead and done that and had them fixed and then assessed everybody's taxes and done them that way. That's the way Lewisburg, New Lebanon, have done so.
Well, that's not a bad idea.
Well, that's exactly what we may have to do, too.
But anyway, the decision's not tonight on Washington street. But you saying what other cuts are we making? That's another one we're going to have to look at as time turns by. And that, our matching fund from general fund will add us twenty thousand, right, Jane?
Yeah.
Uh, BPA is another thirty, twenty-nine or thirty, and street fund is a thirty-eight thousand. We have the portion from the Legion, and we have the portion from BPA. What we don't think we're going to have is a portion from the general fund. The way it's looking right now, it's going to be, it's going to be awfully tough to get. Hopefully, we can figure out something between now and the time we have to make that decision, get that grant money back. But I'd say that's probably going to be the next step, unfortunately. So, people, it is what it is. The numbers are right here, anybody come down and look at them, the money is not there.
Could I say something? On that, uh, the streetlights that you're talking about, have you checked in to getting a lower voltage bulb?
Bob, we have a contract with Miami Valley Lighting.
I know you do.
And we have nothing to do with that.
That's going to collapse. It's going to be gone. Right, your contract?
Anything, yes, but...
And they take care of all the lights, Bob. We have nothing to do with the lights.
It's their lights.
It's their lights, it's their everything. We, they charge us a fee for turning them on. We don't replace the bulbs, they take care of everything.
I understand.
They did though, a couple of years ago, they came back through.
And they have them.
From now on, anytime a bulb is replaced, it will be the last.
They have been going with the newer lights, but they're not going to voluntarily come in and change them.
Well, maybe you could call them and suggest to do that and save. I saved, uh, like fifty percent on mine. By just a phone call.
Well, Bob, I... I'm saving.
And they come and change them.
I need to pay it.
We don't have, we don't have the fifty percent, Bob. We don't even have the eight thousand, eighty-five hundred dollars it's going to take.
Well, then you need to look at your other programs.
I think everything's going to be looked at before this year's out.
I understand, I totally agree.
But we got to start somewhere. And this is the contract that's due this month.
No.
Does it have to be a contract?
They want a five-year contract.
Seven years.
Seven-year contract. We just got through the seven-year contract. So, we talked to them, the last time we were in crunching numbers. People, year before last, had there not been for a twenty-thousand-dollar death benefit left for this village, we wouldn't have made it here that year. We have recently received a thirty-four-thousand-dollar death benefit, and they have up to three years to ask for that money back. And that thirty-four thousand dollars being figured into the general fund now to make the first three months operate this village going into next year. And there's no guarantee that we're going to get that money back. And I, we can keep it, they can, the family could go to court and ask for that back. So, right now, you budgeted it, but you may have to pay it back later.
What about your license plate? Please, just one minute.
That's your name?
That's the street. And that's the other problem, you can have...
Well, the street department's got a lot of money, can't you? Can't you guys vote to bring that in?
No.
No. You got to go to court. You got to go to court from a judge and ask them to take line item. It's the way the budgets are set up. You can't take from this one and go to another fund.
I'm not too sure of all this stuff, so I'm...
So, you can't, trust me, we'd like to do, you got to go to court to get that done. And they're very rarely about letting you have, letting you do that.
You can't throw the streetlights into the street department?
You can't, you, whatever's in this general fund is in the general fund, whatever's in the police levy is in the police levy, whatever's in the streets is in the streets, whatever in the BPA is in the BPA. You, you can have a million dollars in the street fund and go broke the village. Because you can't transfer it in and out of fund. There's not a, I'm, that's just a number, people, there's not a million dollars in the street fund.
But I mean, what, what controls that, I guess?
The state?
The state.
The state?
The state orders.
The state sets that criteria.
State. It's line item, can't change it. Here's the other thing people don't realize. Every time we do a grant, there's an audit. Every time we don't do a grant, we got an audit coming up this year. We estimate the audit is going to be twelve thousand dollars, we don't know. They walk in the door and do an audit on us. The state, we pay our taxes, all of us pay our taxes.
I know, you got to pay the audit.
And they come in and audit us every two years, whether we want it or not, and there is no set charge. It's whatever the hell they want to set us the bill for. One year was twenty-five thousand about eight years ago, and they forced them to change the computer system over. This year, we estimate twelve thousand, but we don't know. We, we don't know what it's going to be, because they just walk in the door and they're here for about six weeks under Jane's feet, and they go through every piece of paper that's ever went across here. And when they're all done, they say, y'all owes this much money. Well, you say, well, we can go pay you. Well, just what? They just go down there to the feet and take it out of your taxes before you ever get it. I mean, there's a lot of things here that whoever's sitting up here doesn't control. Simply doesn't control.
What other things are in with the lights?
Nothing.
No other power or anything?
Seventeen thousand dollars of streetlights, seventeen thousand of the change I brought up.
You can't negotiate with them, no.
How, how many streetlights do we pay for? What's the number?
One hundred and eight, I think.
One hundred and eight. What's an individual streetlight cost? You pay individually?
Nine dollars.
Nine dollars a month, let's see. I think we'll be...
No charge. Well, I tell you what.
I mean, a, a private, you know, private light's cheaper than a contract.
People, I can't tell you what a private light is, I can tell you what they charge the village.
Yeah, I know.
Did you have any, uh, security lights?
I do, and I pay for them myself.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. They're about nine dollars.
I don't break it out of my bills altogether, I don't break it out, I see what it is.
That's what it is.
So...
Our lights are separate.
My lights not, mine's right into the...
You would think with a hundred and seventy, hundred and eighty streetlights in a municipality, there'd be a discounted rate compared to an individual security light.
But it's maintenance, too.
Yeah. Well, they do marketing, they do maintenance.
Here's what the guy from Miami Valley Lighting told me. He says, he says, we understand you're in financial crush, here's what we will do for you. First, if you'll sign a five-year contract, for the first three years, we will give you a seventeen percent discount, and the last two years, you'll have to pay full price. Well, the seventeen percent discount of what we're paying is twenty-five hundred dollars. So now, we're only fourteen thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars short.
Who's Miami Valley Lighting, I guess?
They, they are, they are, what are subsidiary of DPNL, which has just been bought out here a couple of weeks ago. That finally went through, so we don't even know, you know, I don't know if they're even going to say the same, what's going to change with the, with the turnover of DPNL being bought out. But Miami Valley is who we contract, that's who takes care of it. I'm sure there's a subsidiary of DPNL, or used to be a subsidiary of DPNL, whoever the new company is now, I can't tell you who it is. So anyway, that's what they offered to us, give us a seventeen percent discount if we sign a five-year contract. So, you find, you sign a five-year contract, and you can't pay them this year, and you can't pay them next year, and then they take you to court and say, guess what, you owe us five years' worth of money. Now, if we had the money, we paid for the lights to start with.
Well, see, I don't have to sign a contract. Each light is individual.
But we're not an individual, Bob, we are, we're a village.
We're a village.
Where we live.
Well, it's not.
Wherever there's a streetlight, that property is assessed and it's on your taxes.
Yeah. And kind of says, I don't think there's really any way around having to turn these things off, we just have to do it. But, that being said, and, you know, later on down the road, when the, when the village becomes more financially independent, we should be able to negotiate at a real good rate to get them back on, because they're going to want that revenue. On your lights, Bob, did you have to put your poles up, or did they put them up for you?
They put them up.
They did? Are they on the poles here, too?
Well, they own all the poles.
They own them?
Normally, if they go, if they go get you an individual light, Dallas, and you tell them you want a security light, they'll charge you dime bucks and a half.
Yep. Exactly.
And if you go get your own and put it up like we did, it don't cost you...
My neighbor on the side's got one. So, you don't... So, anyway, I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't say it for effect, it's suggesting maybe...
I appreciate your suggestion, it's nothing that hasn't been thought of. You know, we've talked to Miami Valley, you know, we've told them the situation.
Will they show directly to date, part of the line?
Because their contract is with Miami Valley Lighting. That's who takes care of the streetlights. They, it's running out with them, but they're still positioned, they're still controlling. They're the ones controlling.
They don't, they don't like, I always Miami guy.
When I went and told them the situation, the best they offered us was a seventeen percent for three years. I said, it looks very dire here, it looks like, I don't want to say it, but it looks like we're not going to have the money. You know, I expressed to him gravely how serious the situation was, and that was their offer.
Just tell them you're going to make them all private lights.[1603.84] Just tell them you're gonna make them all private lights.
Well, I'm quite sure at the point he tells whatever I wanna tell him, they got all the things behind us and we're a little pee on it, you know, you know. I'm just telling you what they told us they would do for us. I can't, I can't tell you anything other than the conversation that took place.
Can dark roll service the community?
Pardon me?
Can dark roll service the community?
They come right to the.
They're at the end of it, we're at the end of a.
We're at the end.
And if they have the same problem as DPNL does, they can't.
You know, three years ago, remember how we was out for power for all them days, and after that, we went to commissioners and race tech with commissioners, because we're at the end of the line, most villages have a loop, they have an end and another end. We're at the end of the line, they've never ever cared about New Paris, the lights went out between here and here, and they couldn't give a crap, you were just out of power. So we went to commissioners, race tech with them, the commissioners went to RPNL, and that's when we get, we got, we got the, we got the switch out here to the truck stop at RPNL. If the lights are gonna be off long enough, they'll throw the switch from RPNL. They, they went through red tape out the rear end to get that across state lines.
And across, and it cost us three hundred thousand dollars.
We would love to be able to have RPNL come over here and give us prices, cheaper prices than what DPNL are, but when you start crossing straight state lines, it gets complicated. It's just not as easy to say, hey, I wanna hire you to do my lights, it don't happen.
But what about this deal that went through on your, for the lower electrical rates? Did anything come off?
That's residential, that's totally residential is what that is, it has nothing to do, it has nothing to do with commercial, it has nothing to do with factories, it has nothing to do with anything but residential.
So it won't help?
No.
The city go in here?
No. Well, no, it's commercial.
There are companies out there that offer this discounted rates to commercial.
I know, I'm involved in one, but there is some of them out there, but you gotta, you gotta wait and see how that all works out before you recommend it to people. And right now, I mean, I've been involved in one for about eight months, I'm waiting to see if they're gonna hold up what they're gonna do before I come in here and say, hey, people, guess what? I'm not gonna do that until you know if you're assured of it.
Yes, sir. I have a question, of course. Now, with these lights going on, we're all gonna be in the dark, everybody's insurance is gonna go. So this preclude the possibility that the police department getting bigger now, take up the slack because of the darkness?
No.
Is the possibility increase crime?
No. Well, yes, there's a possibility. Crime, just ask. Definitely a possibility, crime reason, but there is no possibility of the police department getting bigger.
So the village can't be sued if the crime rate increases because you turned the lights off? There's no liability on.
If you don't have the bill to pay the bill, I don't see how there's recourse for some, I'm not a lawyer, I can't answer that question.
Well, I know that, too, I'm just asking.
Lights are a luxury.
Just, what would be the possibility of assessing streetlights as a separate utility attached? I know it probably have to be voted on.
It may be a possibility, but what's facing?
Like five bucks a month and add it to the water bill or something?
What's facing us today is we got a contract.
It's gotta be taken care of now.
I'm sorry, Neil.
We looked at doing the lighting district, and there was a possibility of doing it that way, and we were told that we could not do that. That would have to be handled by the Chamber of Commerce upon the mistake.
Yes. Our attorney, we checked in that last time we struck this about, and he said we couldn't do that. If your lights are already on, you can't establish a lighting district. Possibility of, possibility of accessing for streetlights is something that is a possibility, I don't know, I don't have an answer for it.
I think if the lights go out, it probably wouldn't be too hard to pass.
Everybody needs a light to bond for.
Well, we tried to pass that levy, that was hard to pass, so I guess it ain't gonna pass, so if people really want it, they'll probably be like him to begin their own. We got a, a couple of years ago, we had this, this levy, this two mil, two mil that we tried three times before we got it through. And at that time, what we was asking for was, that mil at the time used to be thirty-two thousand dollars in nineteen seventy-four, when they evaluated what your houses were worth in nineteen seventy-four. And this village operated off that mil for, up until three years ago, or three years.
Two years.
Two years ago. And we went to the people and said, listen, all we wanna do is, it wasn't addition, we just wanted to bring it up to date of what the current value is, and it was turned down three times getting that through. So that thirty-two thousand dollar levy that we used to have in nineteen seventy-four got down to where it was, with inflation, was worth about sixty-five hundred dollars that we was trying to operate this village on.
Well, do you think that it's the way you approached it, maybe?
Linda, we have put out letters and letters and information, we've tried to hold meetings, we've tried everything we can do to look at information out there. Everybody's under the misconception that we're trying to do something that we don't have to do. That's not the case here at all, we put the information out there.
And I think it was because you did it behind everybody's back.
Never did. Never did. Everything was in the paper, and we sent out flyers and things like that.
Well, you left the impression that it was behind your head.
They may feel that way.
That's because people go research and try to find out what's going on. Nobody in New Paris ever supports New Paris like they should. And I get sick here and that, because it's not true.
Can I make one more point, Mayor? So, in two thousand thirteen, that thirty thousand dollar levy comes, comes up for voting in. In two thousand fourteen, we have two that comes up. One of them is for thirty-three hundred dollars, and one of them is for forty-seven hundred dollars. We have one other mil out there, sixteen-five. You put them all together and it generates fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars for the village. It's all generates. It takes about six thousand dollars a month just to operate. We get twenty-six thousand dollars for the budget commission. That's all we get. People, the money's not there. We've tried to tell you the money's not there, we're not lying to anybody, the money is simply not there. Having said that, it would be my recommendation, I would make a motion that we do not renew the contract for Miami Valley Lighting.
I second.
Roll call.
Earl Mallon?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Benmichael?
Yes.
Gene Davies?
No.
Mayor Jane Thomas?
Yes. He knew I had to do it, no.
It is what it is, folks, I'm sorry, but it is what it is.
Know the why, then, let them know what the deal is, and that they can go ahead and shut them off if it's fifteen. Sentitation, Mayor Jane. I know you gotta wait till the attorney, because I could tell them, our new attorney coming in, we're gonna go to the prosecuting attorney, we're looking at this.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm sorry, Nick, you had your hand up, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you.
No, I was just, I was pretty sure that the whole piece of the lights was that they had a missing link, was simply that we just don't own any of the fixtures, the bulbs, the glass, the arms, the anything. We don't have the ability to change bulbs or do anything to them, they own the lights.
Yeah, they own it all. And when I first talked to them, and I told them that there's a possibility that we may have to turn them off, they said, well, we'll take everything down, the arms and everything.
Right.
And that was really top expense. And then you come back, I talked to him the second time, and said, well, you know, what we'll do is, you know, I said, we hope this is not an indefinite thing, he said, well, what we'll do is just take the bulbs out.
But they have the right to make them if they.
If you're not paid, if you're not paid, or you're not paid, then you react.
What would be the possibility, if there's like a streetlight in front of my house, which there isn't, but, and you shut the lights off, couldn't that individual, the homeowners and the neighborhood?
You could pay the nine dollars.
Have to pay the nine dollars and get them back on?
Absolutely.
But you owe mine.
I would say that's a possibility.
Call day, car light.
City can't. There's nothing that says you can't do that, all I can tell you is this village cannot make the responsibility of seventeen thousand dollar debt, that's all.
That's something that people need to know, that they may, they could have that option if they wanna pay for it themselves. You got a streetlight every, you know, one in the middle block, one on the corners, you might have three streetlights in a block, or two-block area.
Hey, Joe, did you get them a call, maybe put that in the paper next month?
I think we'll look into that, and make an appeal to the public, if you want, if you want streetlights, you're gonna have to pay for them yourself. But, you know, if you get together as a group of neighborhoods, you're talking, if you had six or seven houses along a block, and you had three streetlights, you're talking ten bucks a month or less.
Why don't why you're gonna give them ten bucks a month when it costs us seventeen thousand a year?
Because we're only gonna pay.
Now, you're talking about, you're talking about the security lights, you're not talking about streetlights. Let's be, let's be correct in what you're saying, you're saying streetlights, but you're talking about individual lights. Two different subjects.
But could the streetlights, the fixtures be security lights and individuals operating or stable?
Are they gonna let you use their pole without sending the money?
No, we're gonna pay them, just like the security.
Good luck with that, I don't know.
Well, that, if, you know, I'm just looking at an option, if people want streetlights on in the neighborhood, I'm taking one.
Okay, anyway, we need to move on.
Well, I have one question.
Go ahead.
We get the lights turned off, they're going to charge us how much for a disconnect fee?
He told me five thousand dollars.
Well, that's what I was.
And that would probably, if we got to the point where we wanted to turn it back on, we would have to pay that five thousand before they even talk to us.
I would assume that would be the, that would be the case, but when you look at, it's just like the contract, the contract's up, the contract's up, I don't know that we actually will have to pay the five thousand dollars. We can say the contract's up, it's yours, do whatever you want, we fulfill our obligation. The chances of them coming back and turning them back on without a really, really bad charge is probably kinda thin, but then again, it depends on economics at the time, and who's running their business down there, and they say, hey, we can generate this revenue if we turn this village back on. That's something we have no control over, oh, I can relate to you, is what they told me on the phone, is what the price is gonna be to take place.
Well, at this point, we have to look at this as a worst-case scenario.
They don't know the polls, but we own the land, right?
No, they're not gonna bill us, we're done at the end of this month, we've paid it, we're up to date, by the end of this month, our contract is up.
They don't, they don't have the disconnect fee that they're gonna charge us and bill us and.
Well, they still, it's five thousand dollars to take them out, but what I'm telling you is I don't know how legally.
We're gonna consult somebody.
We're gonna consult with them to see if they can actually charge us the five thousand dollars.
Does the traffic light squad, too?
No.
The state regulates yourself. Well, I just asked. You're saying electricity's still going through poles, but we're not allowed to use it on the streetlights?
It's not our poles, it's not our electricity.
Okay, I understand that.
We're lucky that we've been able to put up.
They're gonna physically un.
No, they're gonna physically take the voltage out. There's no disconnect of individual poles for streetlights, there's no disconnect, period, for the streetlights that I know of, it's all hardwired.
What about your prices, they get turned off, too?
That's a chamber.
Chamber space for the Christmas lights.
It's not till the end of the year, Christmas lights are gonna be done with anyway, our contract's good till the end of this month.
But at the end of this month, that's where we're going.
At the end of this month, we simply don't have the money to redo the contract for Miami Valley Lighting, that's what I'm saying.
Another thing we tried to do to raise revenue, to help the village, it's been shot down. Well, we talked to Rumpkin, tried to get a trash removal thing in, which we had made a little bit of money on, not a lot, would even save the individual people, it was shot down. We tried.
You'd be paid.
It was shot down.
No, we wouldn't.
We had a two-year guarantee. Two-year guarantee on price.
If they're gonna raise it to a.
It wouldn't matter, we had a two-year contract, Rumpkin would've had to eat that. Now, the next contract, you'd put it out there, you may have, but you also could put it out there for an open bid, it wouldn't have been Rumpkin.
That's right.
We had a locked-in two-year contract, that was gonna cost the people ten dollars a month for two years. Most people were paying eighteen dollars at the time, we was gonna put a five-dollar administration fee on that, so we could make a little money on the village, we're gonna have the street guy, who's looking in to purchase the truck, we're gonna have the street guy, my street guy pick the trash up, take it to the landfill, and we were gonna generate some income on that from the trash, and it was shot down. Because people didn't want, they wanted to choose who they used for their trash, even though they were saving money. And it was a two-year contract. So, since that two years has took place, the trashes went up about six or seven dollars for people.
Closer to seven bucks.
Closer to seven bucks, so, you know, it's not that we haven't tried to come up with ideas to fund this village. What we need is participation for people that live in this village to help us.
And you need to get.
We need to, we need to. Next is the ordinance twenty eleven twelve, contracted for Rebel County Prosecuting Attorney. Rick, would you like to deal with that, tell everybody what's going on?
Okay, our solicitor has resigned, and so we're being forced to look for enough for solicitor, which is not totally all bad. But we went to the chief and the mayor, and I went down to talk to Marty Lotell, prosecutor for Rebel County, and we were paying Mr. Amy five hundred dollars a month for his legal services for solicitor, for prosecutions and such things, plus additional fee when we called him on other matters. The prosecuting attorney has agreed to a two-year contract for the village for three years, no, two years, for three hundred dollars, just on the solicitor part of it, for the, whatever may take plans criminally or prosecution-wise. We've talked with Steve Brunz, and Mr. Brunz has agreed to represent us on the civil side of it, and he's agreed to represent us on a very reasonable rate of fifty dollars an hour. So, we're saving a little money there on the legal fees, which is a good thing for the village.
Did you have him before?
Yeah, Steve before.
You know, we've had a lot of people before, end up the trouble is, nobody wants to deal with a little village for five hundred dollars a month when they get five hundred dollars an hour, so that's the problem. You don't get a go to, the top law firm and say, hey, you know, can you do something for me for fifty dollars or a hundred dollars an hour, it just don't take place, so, you know, Steve is, Steve's been here before, I think Steve's, you know, it is what it is. He's agreed, he's agreed to help us for a very, very reasonable rate, and with our financial budget, that looks pretty attractive to us.
Okay, this is the ordinance twenty eleven dash twelve, agreement between Rebel County Prosecuting Attorney and the Village of New Paris, Ohio, for the prosecution of misdemeanor criminal offenses occurring within the village limits. Article one parties internal contract, this agreement is entered into by and between the Rebel County Prosecuting Attorney here and after prosecutor, one-on-one East Mary Street Courthouse, First Floor, Eden, Ohio, and the Village of New Paris, here and after village. This agreement will become effective on January first, twenty twelve, and will continue in effect for two years from such date. Article two, services to be performed by contract pursuant to RC one nine zero one point three four, the prosecutor agrees to prosecute misdemeanor criminal offenses occurring within the Village of New Paris, Ohio. The parties agree that the prosecutor shall have complete discretion in deciding which cases shall be prosecuted. The parties agree that both are wholly autonomous entities and with neither having advisory authority over the other. Prosecution services limited exclusively to the prosecution of misdemeanor criminal offenses and does not include any civil legal work or advice. Article three, compensation, prosecutor shall be compensated at the rate of three hundred dollars and zero cents per month to be paid quarterly. The first payment shall be due no later than the following quarterly dates, March thirty-first, June thirtieth, September twenty-eighth, December thirty-first. Article four, termination of contract, either party may terminate this agreement for any reason upon the beginning of thirty days notice to either party have the intention to terminate. The remainder is paid as intended. Okay. Therefore, I need a motion to accept if that's what we wanna do.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Earl Mallon?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yeah.
Rick Benmichael?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Mayor Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Gene Davies?
Yes.
I need this emergency. Yeah, she gotta waive the three reading and.
Make a motion that we waive the three reading rule and make this emergency.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Gene Davies?
Yes.
Rick Benmichael?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Earl Mallon?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
I need each council member to sign it.
And we gotta have you thank Steve, yeah.
Well, you gotta do this one, too. Huh?
That's all.
Yeah.
Could you make any smaller?
I'm trying to do it on one page.
Damn. You wanna read it to me, 'cause I can't read it.
Yeah, I need to.
What, you need this?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, I have a second now.
There you go.
Thank you.
Can you make it any smaller?
I'm trying to do it on one page.
Damn. You wanna read it to me? 'Cause I can't read it.
That one, that one's expensive.
Yeah, I need to... What do you need, Jim?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah, I have a second now.
Thank you.
What they, all of you, I'm here.
No, I thought it was gonna... I don't know, maybe from one line that I'm gonna turn to another.
Yes, resolution 2011-12, the resolution approved to the real line of permanent appropriation. Resolution for modified and qualified appropriations from one line item to another within the fund, therefore, be resolved by council, powers of New Paris, that the appropriations be modified.
Motion to accept resolution 2011-12.
Second.
Roll call.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Gene Davies?
Yeah.
Mayor Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes. Is this emergency, Jane? Is that gonna be in before February or what?
Yes.
Yes. You wanna go ahead and do this emergency? I might make a motion that we forego the three-reading rule and make resolution 2011-12 emergency.
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Gene Davies? And Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
This is the final draft.
And we have to request amendment certificate of response.
Okay, this is resolution number 2011-13, fortunately, for request for amendment 2011 certificate of testimony and reception.
I have to take it in my own.
Look, everybody, this is...
You just got the one copy, don't you?
Yeah.
Everybody have a nice Christmas.
Steve, you say it's there.
Yeah.
I should store mine. It's my wasteland.
Too much excitement.
It's my wasteland. We get some pecking in the house.
He's got a sewer line problem in his house.
Oh, God.
Seven feet down. Well, he's talked to himself, 'cause he's in charge of it, right?
Poor woman, he's saying, "There, wow, get your hands here." He calls the shell.
Hey, we already had two of them. We had one at the rental house I bought from him last year this time. We're only six feet down on that one. He said he's nine feet down on this one. He just said none of them.
My last one.
This is later.
And you might get one until 33rd.
Jane, you are gonna be around and help these guys out if you have questions or whatever, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got it.
I did it forty years ago, but that was all power here.
I'm making a motion that we adopt resolution 2011-13.
Second.
Roll call.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Gene Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
That doesn't need to be... That doesn't need to be...
No. He signed this right here. Next to Ohio, there's a leak dues are due for five hundred and ten dollars.
Make a motion that we accept the five hundred and ten dollars in Ohio, that's what we do this.
Second.
Roll call.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Need to... What is this?
It's a legal firm that helps us out on...
That's a state firm that we call...
State firm.
Okay.
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Gene Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Jane Thomas?
Okay, next meeting.
Wait a minute.
I don't... Wait, 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 wait.
We'll get there. Next meeting is on January the 2nd.
That's hangover day. You better change it.
It's a holiday.
So the next one would be the 9th, when we go on the lights.
What is that?
Because you have to give me time to do all this. You can't give me that weekend. That's it. Can I win a party?
Roll call.
Well, it looks like the 16th is another holiday, so... I think the 9th is the one there.
Same time.
Let's go with the 9th.
You're making it the 9th.
You have to be there on the 9th. Seven o'clock. Okay, you got something, Jane?
Under old business, at some point, we need to negotiate with the chamber on that bed tax so they can start getting their money. I'll contact Linda Wright from down, what county? Gasper County. And...
LaBonne?
No, not LaBonne.
She was.
She has the information that I, we need to get that going.
All right.
In fact, she said she would even come to a meeting to, if we had any questions, to explain how they're doing it.
Enter County or Gasper Township?
Whatever, what is it? Oxford? What county is that?
Israel Township. But what? County, it's Israel Township.
Okay.
Okay.
And what's the last one, LaBonne, about the police?
If you were gonna transfer that to the police, so they can be given the year. That's Gasper.
What is it, Jane? Call the budget, available to us? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So how you wanna word this, Jane?
Just as a transfer?
Okay. Make a motion that we make available transfer funds from the general fund to the police department for the starting of 2012 funds.
Good?
Yeah.
I second. Joe, second.
Roll call.
Mayor Jane Thomas?
Yes.
Gene Davies?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Yes.
Earl Mullins?
Yes. And I wanna, I'm sorry, Mayor, I was...
Dallas, this is your last meeting. I know you're still on board till the end of the month.
I probably have my key in already.
Still, that's right. I still would like to thank you for your time and your service for the community. Thank you very much.
You probably still see me around here some.
I know, 'cause I'm gonna put you on...
Send it back here.
Well, I'm gonna put you on another board later. Cancel you.
Is this your last month also, Jim?
Yes.
Thank you to the...
Jim, thank you.
Thank you very much for all your...
To the community.
To the community.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. This meeting is ended.
You need to go and watch. You got a mission?
Might be able to buy you a tieback off the corner.
Hey, Earl Mullins?
Yes.
Dallas Abrams?
Hi.
Joe Bartle?
Yes.
Rick Benwinkle?
Yes.
Gene Davies? He just stays in the car. Mayor Jane Thomas? My dog was like...
I might throw something else out here that some of you may not be aware of, but...